Yeah.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call. Nope, Mr. Trinkle is absent. Okay, approval of minutes. The regular meeting minutes of October 21st, 2021 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 21st.
So moved.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Speaker?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Brother?
Yes.
Yes.
Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Nope. Okay, new business, City Park Design Concept. The park design team along with representatives from Vario will present a concept for City Park Splash Pad and give an update on the Bernard Park complex. Staff is looking for approval of the concept before the design team starts work on the construction documents. At the conclusion of the presentation, we'll need a motion to approve the preferred concept.
Hi, everybody. I got, uh, our project manager Larry Reynolds here tonight from Vario. He's gonna kind of lead the charge. Jeff Bartley's here from Waters Edge to talk about Splash. I want to turn it over to Larry.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for having us here tonight. Uh, we're excited to share what we've put together for City Park Splash Pad. Uh, we've spent some time now working with, uh, Jason and his staff, uh, developing concepts. Uh, we've had a number of discussions. Uh, we developed a couple of site plan concepts and presented them to a steering committee, uh, who selected a, a preferred concept. Uh, we then went out to and visited a couple of, uh, other municipalities with splash pads to, uh, see and compare a couple of different approaches that they've taken, uh, with Jason and his staff and Mr. Vanil. Uh, so tonight I'm gonna start with sharing the site plan concept and then Jeff's gonna talk more specifically about the details of the Splash Pad itself. Uh, then we'll kind of give an idea of where we think we are right now with costs for City Park. And we'll also kind of give you an update of where we're at, where we think we're at on Bernard Park, so you can see those in relation to each other. Um, we're still in design, the construction design phase of Bernard Park, so we're not, we're not finished yet, but we wanted to get here and kind of show you where we're at with City Park, so we can keep moving on that if possible. But let you know where we're at in relation to Bernard Park in both projects, so that's what we're here to show you tonight, the site plan. Um, a few things I wanted to show. This is, the master plan really guided a lot of, of our design work, um, on this. And it includes, as part of Phase One, what we're really looking at is this central area right here and why, the walks, Splash Pad, um, some shade structures around it and a couple of picnic shelters. The other items around this loop trail, sidewalk, future playground, uh, and future expansion, parking expansion, are, are not part of, of the cost and what we've been designing so far. We want to design with a plan of the end goal in mind, uh, with respect to the master plan that you, um, had done recently. So as I said, Splash Pad, uh, centrally located. We also have a flood plain that we would need to be mindful of. That runs right through here. This existing restroom concession building, we wanted to be fairly close to it. We feel like we can repurpose the concessions piece of that to serve as a pump room, uh, for a recirculating pump system. Um, and then thinking again about the future, uh, playground over here. We do intend for there to be a fence around, uh, at least this side of, of the Splash Pad. Not necessarily fully enclosing that whole space, but over here to prevent some movement into, you know, pedestrians and vehicles. We want to kind of keep those separate, but not feel like you're locked in. So I'll zoom in a little bit and these are some of the things we're thinking. Again, Splash Pad, the cantilever shade structures would be around the side of Splash Pad with lots of opportunities for seating. Uh, centrally located then between the Splash Pad and the playground would be, uh, picnic shelters, uh, similar to what I've shown here. And then we have some 3D views to kind of give you a, an idea of, of what that looks like in real life. Again, uh, future parking behind. So it would, uh, first phase would be this walk that comes in, connection into the Splash Pad and, um, concrete over here and underneath the picnic shelters. Jeff's gonna talk a little bit more about the details of the Splash Pad itself and the features that are in there and some of the things that we considered as we went along.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Uh, my name's Jeff Bartley and my role is, is to design, uh, the engineering design of the Splash Pad. So I worked with, uh, worked with Larry and with your committee, uh, to get to this point, uh, for your Splash Pad. This is kind of the, again, zoomed in bird's eye view of what the Splash, Splash Pad would look like. And these are the features that are planned for it. So the way, working with your group, the way we wanted to organize the Splash Pad was to make it kind of, uh, start with kind of subtle features, small, focus on smaller, families with smaller toddlers, and then progress across the Splash Pad to bigger features, bigger dumping water and, and stuff that would be more for the, for bigger kids or, or adults. So that's how it was organized. So starting up here, um, kind of on the north end of that, this is kind of that toddler zone of sorts, where we have, um, and you can see the corresponding, these are the features and they're keynoted. These are pictures of those Splash Pad features. So up here in the toddler zone, uh, we have planned a, this kind of water table up in that area. So it's a, it's an area where water's pumped into this device and it flows down through these kind of scuppers on the table and the kids can stand there and, and play with the water on that table. We have a line of these vertical streams or jets, uh, like that. We have some bubblers in this location. You see that there, so it's just water, frothy water that's kind of gurgling out of, out of the ground in that spot. And as we continue to go south, then the features start to get a little taller. So then we have some of these, we have a zone where the features just, are just a little bit taller than these, than the deck sprays there. Um, so this one is a ring. Maybe it's about two or three foot tall. Um, we have these, um, these kind of bamboo stems that stand a little taller and spray water on the kids. And then as we go to, again, to the south, some taller sprays and then, and then at the end, the kind of center focuses this really large, flash flood, so it's a dumping water feature. So every, um, water fills that bucket continuously and every so many minutes, it just dumps a deluge of water on, on whoever's underneath it. So that's the plan. Here's, here's a rendering, a perspective of that, and you can see again how we have kind of the, the more quiet toddler zone moving into the taller, more active spaces. We've planned, um, we talked about a variety of types of features and the types of surfacing that we might put on the Splash Pad. A very important part of this process was to focus on things that were more manageable in terms of maintenance. So, so as a group, we focused on features that are not climbable or things that can be damaged or, or vandalized. And, and with that, then we don't need fall zone soft surfacing in this. You see a lot of that on playgrounds. You also see that on Splash Pads, but on, they are, on Splash Pads, it tends to be a lot more maintenance when you start to mix that with chlorinated water. So, so everything we're showing you is, is, on the surface, is a broom finish, not skid, concrete. That, uh, it's not slippery, so the kids won't slip, hit their head, but it's also not, uh, it's not an expensive material that you would have to replace or maintain. The other big topic for the group was what kind of system to use for the water. There, there are two primary options. One is single pass where you hook, hook these features up to your, the city tap water. And we have valves that turn it on and the water comes out of the spray features, gets collected and drained and then goes away to waste, back to your sewer plant. Uh, the other option is to have a storage tank where we treat the water and we recycle that water, filter it, keep it clean, but we use that for the spray features. So we looked at those two options and they each have pluses and minuses to them. So for this plan we're proposing, it would be a filtered and treated system. And, and there are some reasons for that. The, some, some points about that. With that treated system, it does require staff involvement. Um, your staff has to take care of this system and the water and make sure that it has proper chlorine in it and it's sanitary and, and stays clean. So it does require that. We've assumed for this Splash Pad, it might take 10 to 15 hours per week for your staff to take care of this Splash Pad. So that's, that is a significant investment in time for somebody to do that. And we estimate that the operating cost for that, when you add up, you know, the, the big cost items on this are staff time along with some electricity. And, um, those are primarily the, the big costs and it's about 10 to 15,000 per season by our estimate. Compare that with the single pass system. It reduces the construction costs because you're not building the filters and the system that treats the water. Uh, so you can reduce that initial capital cost, but you start to use a, you can use a lot of water through the season. So that's the comparison. The recirculated system, that's the cost and the labor and the initial equipment. The single pass system is the cost of water being used. Those are the primary things. But for the Splash Pad, you could use significant amount of water through the, through the summer. And, and by the Splash Pad we've shown you, it could be as much as $40,000 a season to operate that. And that's more majority, vast majority of that is the cost of the water. On the opposite side of that, it's less staff time. You don't have, the staff doesn't have to manage that water and make sure it's clean because you're simply turning those, spick it on and it's going away. Uh, question?
A question on, uh, so if staff goes tests the water, it's not good, how, how much does that add to downtime for the Splash Pad over, over that same period of time?
Well, if, if they test it and something's wrong, it's out of balance or it doesn't have the chlorine in it, you shouldn't operate it until it gets up to speed. The, the good thing about this system, it's not a huge system, so you should be able to turn that around. So, so if it doesn't have chlorine in it, it, you should be able to get chlorine in the system pretty quickly. So, so I wouldn't expect this to be, if your staff shows up and something's wrong, I wouldn't expect it to be down for the day. I would, I would anticipate they could manage that and get it up and going in a, in a couple hours. We also plan to have systems in place. Um, I think it's important to have, we'll have controllers, boxes that basically sample the water and test for the chlorine and test for the pH. Those are the primary factors that you're looking at. And it'll test those and it'll automatically feed, uh, that, those chemicals in and maintain that. So, so really your staff is cross-checking that, is, is double checking that system. And that system ought to, we, we want that system to have some connectivity, so if something goes down, it doesn't wait till, till your guy goes out there and measures it. Uh, they'll get notified and know there's a problem and they can go out and deal with it.
Recirculate system, do you ever have to just completely dump the system and start fresh water?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, there are times when you, you have to do that. And the system that, what we're planning, it's, it's, um, I believe it's about 2,500 gallons. So on worst case scenario, you would dump the 2,500 gallons and refill that.
So often would you have to dump the system and start fresh?
Um, you shouldn't have to through the season unless something goes wrong. Um, so, you know, I wouldn't anticipate that to be a common occurrence. The only caveat to that is if, if, if it's so wildly popular and it just gets hammered with, with people, then, then it's gonna take a lot more effort and you might have instances where the best scenario is to do that, dump it and start fresh.
Club car wash, they recirculate.
The what?
Club car wash, they recirculate.
Think they do, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, to me, I look at that $40,000 per season. That's significant.
Hey, you make up that 110,000 in the difference within just a couple of years.
You do. In fact, we did, um, jumping ahead, as part of this process, we did kind of a life cycle analysis on this and compared. This is actually a comparison of, of kind of a project cost. So we factored in the cost of the equipment plus the operating cost. And you can see these two lines that are comparing. Um, this is our projected cost. So, so we did this early on before we knew what the Splash Pad was. But this, this is the gallons per minute, the amount of water we're pumping through, the features, um, and then the cost. So you can see that, that down and when it's a really low amount of water that you're, you're spraying up, obviously the cost of that water is lower. It makes more sense to have a single pass system. But as you start to pump more water in these features, then, then you start to separate. And in this case, this is about the range what we're looking at. Um, you can see that it's, it's, it's twice, at least twice the amount and cost to do a single pass over a filtered system. And it has a lot of assumptions and I don't, I don't know if you, um, this, these slides here, you can study those, but that, these include the assumptions we put in that. This is a list of those spray features and they, they have ranges for what the flow rates are for those. So for example, the, you know, what we were looking at, you know, if, if all those features are running at the same time, max flow, that could be 290 gallons per minute. Um, we're not, you're not gonna do that on a single pass system. So, so there are things you can do to sequence those things. So, so put it, there's a computer control to those, so we can, so we can sequence them, so they're not all running at the same time. Certain portion of them are running at one time. And then the Splash Pad itself will have activation baller, so it's not running if no one's out there at the park. So, so someone will activate it and then it'll go through, through its cycle. So with those factors, we kind of cycle that down and, and for our evaluation, we estimated about 110, 113 gallons per minute through the course of the season. And then when you start to talk about season, that, that plays a big factor. The longer the season is, the more expensive it is, uh, but the more benefit the community gets. Um, so we made the assumption that the Splash Pad, for this analysis, Splash Pad would be run 10 hours a day. And it would be about 105 days open, but more like 120 day season. And then you lose some days because of weather, so about 105 days of actually operating. So those are the factors that go in there. Your, your, cost of your water is significant, so that's what makes the single pass option more expensive.
What's the typical lifespan on one of these pumps, like, to run one of these?
The pumps themselves would be, um, they'd be 10, 15 years on that.
You know, one of, and Jason, I don't want to speak for you, so correct me if I'm wrong. I was a member of the committee and one of Jason's concerns was staffing. And, you know, we, we talk about 15 hours of time. That's when you're on site. That's not if you're called away from a job and you have to travel time. I mean, we need to consider all those factors.
Well, one, one thing I-
Your department, uh, one more thing, sorry.
No, that's all right. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
You indicated you're, you're, you're busy. You guys are busy. And this is gonna be open during the busiest time of the year.
Right.
Correct?
That's correct.
So, as, you know, I think as a council, we need to be, uh, aware of that as we make that decision.
That's two days a month. That's two days a month.
Yeah. Well, some other, some other things we learned along the way too, that we, we didn't necessarily know or we didn't talk about and when we were in with the committee. We knew with this, we gotta think this is gonna be Saturdays and Sundays, holidays as well. So, you know, everybody knows that, we're, it's gonna be open every day. And, um, something else we learned on the tour was, uh, in my head, this was like a, this was like a daily check kind of thing for staff, but that's not necessarily the case. This is probably more like an every four hours kind of a check thing for staff, I think. Is that correct? Uh, well, it could be, part of it, um, you know, you'd like to think the system that's sampling it is doing a good job and you're cross-checking it. You get some comfort in that and then you don't have to check it as much. Um, there are, health departments are starting to scrutinize these more. And it, and if you get really, you know, health department really scrutinizes it, is it, and they want you to do it in the point that it's like a swimming pool, then you get into that, you need to check it, manually sample it once every four hours or so. Um, I don't think you're there, uh, right now, but that's, that's certainly a possibility in the future. I did, just out of curiosity, I checked with the city of Leavenworth and that is what they're doing. We're talking about pools versus splash now, every four hours. But, um, I don't know that that's mandated by the county or anything at this point in time.
I was in Heterson, Fall Spat, Splash Pad. We, my interest, saw some guy there checking on what I, it was, he was a worker, he was checking on it. And, uh, you know, I asked him, so how does this work? He said, uh, time intensive. And he said, yeah, some days it is, some days it works like a charm. And he spoke a lot about use, like how many kids they got there. That particular day, there was a ton of kids there. He said, this is my second time back. It was about three in the afternoon, so.
Anyway, I just, I'm glad you asked that. I wanna make sure everybody understood what we're talking about as far as staff time, so.
Have the, um, the other areas that have these Splash Pads, have they shown a preference for which system they prefer?
Uh, well, I don't think there's a staff department anywhere that wouldn't prefer the single pass. Um, just because it, it's simple and it's bulletproof. Um, it, you know.
It's a lot of water.
But it's, it is, but then you're weighing that against, yeah, exactly. You're weighing that against the amount of water. And if, so that, so the deal is when you, we create a significant Splash Pad and it creates a dynamic effect that people are excited about, that ends up using a lot of water and it just makes it, it makes it more expensive.
We, we toured the Splash Pad in Carney, Missouri, and they have the single pass system. And the thing that that guy touched on was they owned their water utility, so they weren't paying that $38,000, $40,000 a year. Whereas we, since we don't own our water utility, that'd be, you know, expenses 100%. So that was, that was interesting when we'd spoken to those guys. That was, uh, you know, a, a big thing when they made their decision that they owned that utility. Yeah, yeah, that could be, yeah.
Okay, um, and then I think, I think you're up, Larry. I think we're next. Talk about the fund stuff. Yes.
So a little update on where we're at, uh, cost wise, uh, with, we'll start with City Park. Uh, and again, we're still at the concept design phase. Uh, we feel we're right at about 1.3 million. That's 665,000, you know, about half of it is just the Splash Pad itself. Pad, uh, pumps, uh, and everything that goes with that. Site work, picnic shelters, uh, and whatnot are, uh, the other half of it is about $400,000, $450,000. Some additional things that would be nice to, to do, um, some of those perimeter things that we showed, the loop trail, the parking lot, uh, playground and whatnot, those would total about $465,000.
We could, we could, uh, we could work with you guys on the actual loop trail itself though, too. I mean, we could work on the design, maybe get it out for a quarter mile, maybe outside, inside, wind up being a half a mile loop trail where we have a lot of people exercising, walking, biking, jogging, whatever on that thing.
Right. And you, you really kind of have one there already as it is.
Yeah.
It's, it's not the perfect loop or, uh, you know, oval shape, uh, but you have one there that would, that served, you know, at least for some time and could connect into, uh, the Splash Pad and parking lot and whatnot.
One of the things the committee really liked about that trail too is we felt like there would be less shenanigans if people are constantly walking around that trail. Because this, the Splash Pad is kind of off the beaten path a little bit. But I mean, if, if kids go there thinking they're going to be damaging something or vandalize something and they see adults using that trail, they're not going to do it. So that was one of the things, one of the things the committee really liked about that.
Yeah, parents love to be able to come to Loop Trail, watch their kids as they're playing, uh, playground. So in relationship to, um, Bernard Park, right now Bernard Park, where we feel like we're about 5.3 million. So total, we're at 6.6. We're still working on Bernard Park drawings, as I said earlier, so, uh, we don't have our final number. That's kind of a take of where we're at right now. We wanted to let you know where we feel like we're at. That's, you know, above what was in the master plan. So, uh, if there are concerns, we kind of want to know. Uh, but again, we, we need to finish our design, uh, work for, for Bernard Park. Sure.
And how much was it about?
Five million was the, uh, master plan budget.
That's okay. Was that total or just?
That was total for both.
Security and the trail and everything. The existing trail that's there, to me, is kind of a long way away.
On, uh, which park? On City Park.
Yeah. Um, if you can go back to that.
Sure.
Picture, I'd appreciate that.
Oh, there we go. So-
The, the existing trail is clear up there.
Yeah, you can see the trail, yeah.
So, when you talk about having people there to keep the mistic down, it can be a long way from there if they're up there on that north end.
Sure.
And for 65,000 roughly, with that.
Yeah, there's some other things that go along with it too. I mean, putting this in fits right in between, you know, a couple of fields. It clips this one off. We have some dilemma, demolition, you know, accounted for in there, but there's a lot that's gonna be removed. And you gotta kind of think about too, well, once that all go gone, is removed, what does it look like and, you know, how is it accessible to, uh, your patrons?
What you have there might be more preferred by older folks, maybe, as opposed to walking the current one. And then you're drawing the crowd closer to where all the action's going on.
You see how close you are. What I was looking at was, you see how close you are to a quarter mile.
Yeah, right.
We could easily make that quarter mile, you know what I'm saying? Yep.
I just think, if, I just think, to me, it makes more sense to, to have that one put in now and, and have those people that are walking are visible or visible to the kids as opposed to somebody that's clear up in that horse corner.
So Gene, can you tell me, I'm not phoned, I'm sorry.
So you're saying it would be nice to install this as part of Phase One, uh, rather than have to rely on existing?
Yeah, and that, and the way you've got it looped, you can come back around and then, you know what I'm saying? So they do a pool here on this side of the pad as well. I mean, they could go either or is kind of what I'm saying that would add the extra. So they're constantly around that Splash Pad.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Thinking of course we can get those people to the Splash Pad, less likely to have if you.
Yeah. So this could scrunch down and this could scoot out a little bit, span, we can massage that. Uh, we do want to be mindful of, of the, is that gas or sewer?
Sewer.
Sewer, yeah. Sewer that runs through there, but certainly we can make that happen.
What the middle of the walking trail be? Just grass? Inside the loop?
In, in here?
Inside the loop, between the, between the trail.
Oh, yeah, grass.
Right, so. So there wouldn't be any obstructions if you're looking back toward the Splash Pad from the-
Opening the program, green space. Yeah.
Picnic area, whatever, yeah.
I just want, want to make sure that everybody picked up on the, the demo piece of that though. Did, you guys heard that? Okay.
What?
Well, if we put, put that loop in, if we put that loop in, you've got a def, we got a-
Well, if we put that loop in, if we put that loop in, you've got a, we've got a demo out Field 3.
Elevation changes, yeah.
Well, and I'm just talking about moving.
Building.
The short fences and stuff, not that big a deal, but the backstops, those type of things, those would have to go. So if you guys remember right, the ball field that you can see where it says baseball field down there at the bottom left, that one stays, that stays.
Yeah, see where he's got the red line now? That's kind of what I was talking about, the walking trail.
I mean, it would have to go anyway.
Oh, coming down around, okay, gotcha.
Continues.
If you put a drill in, you're going to have to.
Ultimately, it'd be the best if it all goes.
Either way, you're constantly going around there.
Correct me if I'm wrong here, but I, we don't, there's not enough money to demo everything.
Right.
Right off the bat.
I don't think so.
Okay.
One again.
I said, just to make sure everybody understood that there's not enough money to demo everything, that's not going to be used right from the get-go, at least in this figure.
We're still looking into that and what we can.
Get what you pay for.
So I'm hearing that it would be nice to include the loop trail as part of Phase 1, if it's affordable. And with these two projects sort of being separated and Bernard Park going out first, it'd be helpful to know, once that, the bids came in on that project, to know where we're at in relation to the City Park project, too, so. So we've provided kind of a diagram just to kind of give you an idea of where some of our costs are in Bernard Park throughout. And there's, some of our big ticket items are sports field lighting, our restroom concessions building. Those are our big ticket ones. Some of the things we've been thinking about, you know, in terms of what alternates could we think, consider? What are some cost savings we might need to consider? Parking lot, we figured, starting off, the master plan had put in for 100 parking stalls. You need more than that with this. So that 100 parking stalls initially started out here. And as we talked more and expanded that to accommodate all of what you really need, well, we felt like, starting out, that we could only do asphalt in just that center area. Well, we need to do gravel, maybe in the other two areas. Then we went back to, it's gravel everywhere and we can afford that and do everything, so we have some kind of pave service. But it really makes sense to include as part of base bid, this central area is asphalt. Chip and seal for the other two sort of expansion areas. We asked for an alternate add for asphalt of those expansion areas and a deduct to go to gravel if we need to as well. So we have some flexibility to go up and down and we have pricing for those options. That's the direction we're heading. Are there any questions?
Well, for tonight, we need a motion for the City Park plan, is that correct?
I make a motion, we approve the design.
Hang on a minute, before you make a motion. If we do make a motion, are we agreed that that motion should include the loop, the optional loop?
I will make the motion with the optional loop.
Go and do that, Greg.
I make a motion that we approved the design concept for City Park, including the optional loop into Phase 1. Second?
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
What water system will that, does that include?
The recommended one, which was to recycle.
Recirculating system.
Everybody good? Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Mr. Dundeehead?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three is equipment replacement requests. There are three items requested for equipment replacement. A four-wheel drive pickup for CED, return, a zero-turn standing mower for parks, and a three-quarter ton four-wheel drive pickup with plow package for public works. If approved, staff will solicit bids for the requested items and bring them back for a final approval by the council. Need a motion to approve the requested items and authorize purchase of up to $114,000 of replacement equipment from the Equipment Reserve Fund.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on these?
On the pickup truck for CED, will that also be able to have a plow on it? Usually all our trucks and that we use for snowplows. Yes, no, don't need it?
The intent initially would be not to put a plow on it with this, with $35,000 price. But we could certainly add one in the future if we decided to. What we're trying to do is get a half-ton truck instead of a Ranger or something that size, try to get something a little bit bigger, but not go to the level of a three-quarter ton, which seems like a lot more money, you know.
I understand, all right, thank you.
Wait, for which one, for the CED?
For the CED truck, yeah.
So that'd be a smaller truck?
It'd be a half-ton, is what we're trying to go, yeah.
We're going to try to shop local for these, right?
Yes.
Because chief started getting his cars local, right?
Yes.
That's certainly the preference. I know we tried to reach out to find out if there was a ballpark estimate on rams and what we've invited them to bid.
That's in the ballpark, the price that we put in there is, I think we can get one for that price.
Yeah.
Steve, but when you requested bids on cars, did some of the local people didn't even?
They did last time.
Last time they did, yeah, local did it last time. There have been times where they have.
Since they changed owners, they started.
Yeah, the last two years, they've been bidding, they beat the state contract last time as well.
That's right.
Good.
Anything else on this one? Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Mr. Dundeehead?
Yes.
Item number four is a fence request for 142 Woodland Road. The property owner wishes to replace the existing fence and extend it into the building setback. Staff have reviewed the request and find no conflicts with adjoining site triangles or easements. Need a motion to approve the fence request for 142 Woodland Road.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? No? Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Mr. Dundeehead?
Yes.
Item number five is executive session economic development. Need a mo, yeah, so I'm going to need a motion to recess. I need a motion, somebody going to make the motion?
So moved.
No?
You can read the whole thing.
I need a motion to recess in the executive session to review economic development activities pursuant to the discussions of confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. Exemption KSA 75, 43119 Bravo 4, for 45 minutes, beginning at, what time was it?
7:38.
7:38 and returning at 8:23.
So moved.
That's good, ma'am.
I have a motion and a second, call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Mr. Dundeehead?
Need a motion to return to open session.
Move we return to open session. Second.
A motion and a second, call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Mr. Dundeehead?
Yes.
A report, city attorney?
Another report, ma'am.
Tim?
I have nothing.
Nothing, department heads? Mike, man? Okay, we'll go around the horn, starting with Gene tonight.
Other than looks, progress we're making on the park is encouraging. So I'm glad we're moving right along.
All right, Marcus?
Hey, yeah, following Gene's thing, I appreciate the City Park and the guys coming in and doing the presentation, that's good. I'm on board too, let's get this thing going. And I'm excited about the equipment replacement, Tim, that's a good call to get that going, so. Other than that, thanks for our first responders, thanks chief, thanks, shout out to our fire department guys, thanks for the first responders and the COVID thing's not going away, we're losing people. We lost another close one today, it's just, it's not going away, so continue to practice safety is all I got, thank you.
Jesse?
Yeah, it's nice to see the cones gone at May and Eisenhower. Well, they've just been replaced on the east side. Hey, the line's gone for now, so. I know it's going to get worse next year, but at least it's, traffic's flowing way better, so.
There's no light on the east side.
Yeah, it, you know, progress, you have to crack some eggs to make a cake, so. So be patient next year when we do these construction projects, so. You know, we really appreciate everything our city employees do to move our city forward. Thank you, everybody, thanks again, like Marcus said, thanks to our first responders. We appreciate our police department especially, you know, they get beat up a lot around our nation right now, we really appreciate. And it was good to see some of our cities in our country that didn't defund their police departments recently. They stood behind, that's awesome. We need to stand behind our police departments and our first responders, that's all I've got.
All right, thanks, Jesse Gray.
Yeah, thanks again to Jason and the Park team for coming out. I want to publicly thank Terry for helping me pick up my broken eggs the other day at Gillman's. I appreciate that.
Was that a messy job?
It was horrible, but, yeah, thanks, Tim, staff's doing a great job. I'm just jumping on the bandwagon. And hey, on this day in 2008, Barack Obama became the first person of African-American descent to be elected the President of the United States, that's all I have, ma'am.
All right, Ryan?
Nothing for me, ma'am.
Okay, thanks, Ryan, Terry?
I have nothing, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Don?
I've got a request. We've been wrestling with the intersection of Gilman and K-7, over 20 years. We had some mortality accidents down there. And we've reached out to KDOT to help us try to fix it. They won't let us put a light there, you know, with turning signals, et cetera. I think the last request we made was to try to get them at least maybe paint some lines, you know, arrows, to help people when they cross over and whatever, turn out of Gilman. And we come up, we come up negative because we're talking to KDOT or whatever. I'd like to request maybe that the mayor reach out to our local representative, Mr. French, and see if he can't generate something, energize something at the State House, get KDOT or something to really look at this and give us a hand here trying to fix that corner for public safety. With that, I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Mr. Dundeehead?
Yes.
You are adjourned.